The Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anne, can we have a roll call members please?
Schmuckel?
Yes, here.
L. McManus?
Here.
Corn?
Here.
Lap?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Agustinelli?
Here.
And Jay McManus?
Here, thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and the end of each meeting. So if you have anything you'd like to let the board know, now's the first attempt to do that, or opportunity I should say, so we'll open up public comment at this point. Anybody like to come forward, state your name and address for the record and let us know what you want to say? And as often the case, I do not see any public running forward. We're going to close public comment, move on to the review and approval of the agenda. Yeah, Chris?
I would like to remove item 3F.
Just completely remove it from the agenda?
Completely remove it from the agenda, yeah, but that is being handled differently.
Okay.
Oh, and I would like to remove item 3D.
For discussion?
I don't think we need to discuss it. I think that's consent calendar.
Yeah.
But you can remove it and discuss it at a different thing.
Well, if you want to, the item we're talking about needed just to be taken off the agenda. If you're talking about removing it with consent calendar for discussion, that's done a little bit later. So, after she reads it.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the consent, or the, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of F.
Support.
Motion means supported to approve the agenda removing item 3F. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar, Anne.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes, August 12th, 2025, regular meeting, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $207,258.55, recommend approval. Schedule public hearing for September 23rd, 2025, to establish the property tax mileage rate to be levied to support the township's 2026 general and fire fund accounts, recommend approval. Consideration of township's, township manager's yearly evaluation form, recommend approval. And consideration of GFA authorization for additional services for the McCray PRV relocation, recommend approval. And F was removed.
Thank you. Now, is there any item anybody on the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere?
Yes, I'd like to have item D, the consideration of township manager's yearly evaluation form, removed.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Is there any item staff would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? Any item, anybody in the public would like to have removed? All right. I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar with that item removed.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar, removing item D.
Second?
Motion means supported to approve the consent calendar minus item D. Any further discussion on that? Anne, can we have a roll on that please?
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right. Item four, items removed from the consent calendar, item D. Lori, what would you like to talk about?
Well, as a member of the personnel committee, I didn't, I didn't realize it was ready to be on the consent calendar until I saw the agenda.
Okay.
I didn't know there was a timeframe on it. So, I'd like to see some changes to it.
All right. Would you like to table approval of it till a later date then?
Yes, that would be great.
What's the timeframe on that? When we, who do we like to see that? I mean, I'm not on the personnel committee, so what?
Right. When is your event?
I think it started in the first of October.
It's on the next board meeting.
We could put it on.
Next board meeting, so, okay. All right.
Are they just minor changes that you could?
Yeah.
We could just say what they are and we could update it.
I'm not ready to say what they are, and I don't want to use everybody's time right here to do that. It just, we'll just, it'll be on the next meeting.
All right, so, you want to make a motion to table it until our next meeting? That would, I guess that's what we would do. It's on our calendar, so I need somebody to make a motion to table the discussion or the approval until our next meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table the approval of the manager's performance evaluation form until the meeting of September, I'm not sure what the date is.
Eighth.
September 8th.
Eighth or ninth is it?
Ninth.
September 9th. Okay, the ninth.
It's the ninth.
That's good reference.
All right. Do I have any? All right. Motion means supported to table item, what originally was 3D until our September 9th meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seconded that motion, I don't think anybody did.
Molly did, yep. All right, motion carried, thank you. I see nothing under correspondence, so we'll go to our county commissioner report.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Flynn, county commissioner, District 2. First and foremost, we passed our opioid spending plan last meeting. We had a study session the week before, really went into some details. How that's going to go is going to be one set committee, but there's going to be two tracks. 60% of the funds are going to be split into entities such as the health department, sheriff's department, county departments that are facing the opioid issue firsthand. And then the 40% will go to the same committee for approval for like a grant process, so nonprofits or other community partners can apply for those funds. Also, the marijuana funds are also going to be available out into the community, and that is for a grant process as well, and that will be starting September 2nd. The kind of meaning behind those ones will be more towards a strategic plan. I see it more going towards like entities working on infrastructure, workforce development, parks, you know, things that make our community better. So, that opens on the 2nd, so tell all your friends. We also heard from the mental crisis, the health and human, the, not the, where am I? I don't have my glasses. Mental health crisis access center, so we heard from Munson. It was a really great informative presentation in July, Phase 2, fully opened. So, they don't have the data that I would have loved to hear, but they are only a couple weeks in, so that data is being collected with higher rates of different age groups, who's coming in, all that important information so that we can move on to the next phase and continue to help with the mental health crisis here in the whole country. We also got a great report on our general fund. I do know the budget will be coming towards us, if not next meeting, in the, later meeting in September. So, we're really hoping to get that passed and really reviewed. So, we're passing it in a timely manner, not two weeks before the end of the year. Owners representative for the La Frayner project. Administration's going to go to the building authority and see if they are able and capable to be the owners rep for that project, so they can oversee the bonding and what needs to happen. I also do hear that we will be seeing final design plans shortly on that project, so we'll really know what's going to happen and how that's going to affect La Frayner here in the next few weeks. And that is all I have this evening, so any questions that I can help you with?
That's it for Lauren.
You know how to get ahold of me, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Excuse me, MMR report.
All right. A few things tonight for you guys. Our Phase 2 operations have started on the new location on a park drive. A lot of those are actually getting finished. We've been underway with those for a few weeks now. So, the sidewalk off, out front just got completed, that looks pretty good. They just finished our dumpster pad, so we can get that put in an actual spot. Concrete floors were all polished inside in the open spaces that we have, so that all looks really nice. And they're getting ready to start the second classroom for the education center. So, once that's completed, the education center will be fully completed, which will be good because we actually have two classes going on right now, which I'll move into that. Our paramedic class is still going strong, that's the fast track course. So, I believe there's 11 students in that, that's what they started with, and they're all holding strong. They'll be done sometime in March, I believe. We just started an EMT class three weeks ago, so first week of August, I believe it was, and there's 10 students in that. Those are scholarship students. Those guys will be done mid-December. So, a lot of students right now. Hopefully, they all make it through, I'm guessing they will. We got a, a lot of good people that put in for that class, or both of those classes and got accepted, so it's looking great. Cross stuff off here so I don't repeat myself. We did unfortunately lose two full-time paramedics since the last meeting. And with that, we did hire a new full-time paramedic. She is in orientation right now, so she'll probably be done sometime end of September and start her matrix in October. She's actually a rehire, so we're glad to have her back with us. And then, two EMTs just completed their paramedic training, and they're both licensed now, so they are also going through their orientation process. One of those is, they're housed out in Whitewater right now, but when she's done, we're going to pull her into Traverse City. Other than that, Jeff Hayford is the, the name of the new operations manager for this area. He starts, he technically started Monday. He's doing some orientation stuff down in Saginaw right now. And then, he will be in Traverse City on Thursday. So, I'll start working with him. I plan to be with him for a couple weeks, few weeks, just to get him underway. He's going to be completely new to the area. He is moving from Lenawee County. So, he's actively looking for a house in the Calcasca area right now, since he's going to be covering this area in Gray Lane. He wants to be in, in the middle of the two. So, I personally know Jeff, he's a really awesome guy. I think he's going to be a great addition to not only MMR, but our community as well. So, hopefully, I will be here at the next meeting with him unless he doesn't want me here, but I'm planning on attending with him at this point. So, you guys will all get to meet him then, if not before, if he stops into the office or something. The other thing, and that's the only major incident we had since the last meeting was the Walmart incident, which I'm sure everybody's aware of by now. But, I'll keep it short, but the response to that was pretty impeccable from ourselves and our neighboring agencies. So, we, we got lucky on that one, and all the resources that were, that needed to be there were available at the time, so everything just kind of fell into place perfectly, and that all went pretty well. But, that's all I have for you guys tonight, unless anybody has questions for me.
Any question? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Going to take off because I got to be to Benzey by 7:00, but you guys have a good night.
Thank you. Next on, Anne, is our engineering report, construction update.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. I'm guessing, I hope Karen put on everybody's desk a copy of the construction report, because I appreciate the manager reminding me that it was on the agenda. I've been busy with a couple things, so I appreciate. I mean, it's the same format, but I go through and try to update. So, thank you for accommodating me on that. Few items to go through of note. McCray PRV relocation, I appreciate you guys approving that under consent calendar. The engineer for the, it's now called the Brixton, they're on 31. We have the plan reviews going through, utility, stormwater review, and they were, yes, more than accommodating, recognizing with the new PRV in the proposed location would provide them better pressures along with others in the area that definitely will be well received both by DPW and definitely with Metro Fire. So, they shared their CAD files, and we're going to be able to just get that wrapped up because our timeline for that, really, it was just some design changes as far as the location and working with that engineer to ensure that we have facility access. I met with DPW. They like the location a lot better too, because it's a lot safer off the road. And then, we'll get that project out for bid, and really, it's just similar to other PRVs is lead time for ordering up equipment. But, our timeline is we would like to have that installed and in before, and we can be out of the way before that development moves ahead. Other items, our DPW director has been providing us with the new master meters, actually, as of today, some updated data from the flow meter readings. So, we're going through that, and everything seems to be pretty consistent with what we've seen historically with some of the data that we had, but with using the multiplier. So, nothing, huge red flags, so that was well received. Ridgeview Court Water Main, I think we've gotten, it was just trying to navigate some of the parameters. Ultimately, the road commission, they did have some staff limitations. And so, Gordy Frazier doing the construction engineering and inspection for Water Main. I offered to them that we could definitely be in their, in their representative in their capacity. It was just kind of working through the dynamics as to, does that, contractually, that's probably what you guys pulled earlier, is do I work under Garfield? Do I work under the road commission? So, it's kind of navigating that. And then, ultimately, the manager there felt it was easier just for us to invoice him directly. So, I was happy to get that resolved because Elmers has been calling me daily to get that going, because they have a gap in their schedule. So, with that, now that we're able to move ahead as the, providing the construction, engineering, and inspection, both categories, we scheduled a pre-construction meeting for the 8th here in all the parties. And so, from there, just a quick little update, because it is on a local street in a small subdivision, we wanted to make sure that we coordinate with the property owners and make them aware as to schedule and what they can expect. With the Water Main project, it does provide an opportunity, should they want to at that time, retain that contractor separately to, you know, install the Water Main from the curb step, which is the public right-of-way side, onto private property into their home. They would have the ability to do that. I know I have provided some information previously to trustee Denise Schmuckel. And so, with that, and because with the mail and the timing, we have a standard letter that you guys have seen with other projects that will provide to all those owners along with that literature of how they can connect, and we'll probably just hand-deliver them all, just because it's just a small little neighborhood and make sure that they have it, and that they'll have a contact both for Gordy Frazier and Elmers, and what they can expect as far as road closure, making sure they have access to their driveways restoration, things like that. Does anybody have any questions with Ridgeview specifically?
I see the pre-constructions this Thursday. How soon after that?
Yes, like, what did I, did I say?
You said the 8th, it's 28th.
I'm sorry, they want to start the 8th, I apologize.
Okay, so that was my question, when do they want to break ground? So, it's September 8th they want to be in the ground, okay?
Yeah, I got a million dates in my head, I'm sorry. Everybody wants to get a bunch of stuff done this week, I think, because there's a holiday coming up. Kind of annoying me.
Jennifer, I do have a question, and one of the, a couple of the neighborhoods asked, so you're going to supply that information, because there's quite a few of them, I think, that want Elmers to do the hookup right then and there, so you will provide who to contact?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. It's that, and you guys actually have it downstairs. I had provided it to Karen before, but for the DPW, at one point, we had provided basically an easy brochure of how to connect to water, how to connect to sewer, and what to expect, who to call, and the steps on the private side. So, because you do need to retain a contractor. They are doing connection in the home, which requires a licensed plumber to go through building code and pull those, so a lot of times, it's just easier if you can work with a contractor. And in this capacity, if Elmers is there on site and mobilized, most likely, it will be cheaper.
So, they would just do that part of it, and then the homeowner has to hire a plumber?
Well, or Elmers may on their behalf.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's part of what can be worked out with Elmers. They may just, because I've seen them do that oftentimes, is they'll just handle it all for you for one price, which would be nicer. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. So, no, we're excited to have that, have finally get that little project done.
You are.
Yes, somebody else's too. But, thank you. So, they're going to start the 8th. The goal is by the end of September, they will be done. So, they'll do the Water Main first, and then the road reconstruction thereafter. So, thank you, Joe. Other things, as far as, probably a lot of focus has just been park projects, to try to get those through. We finished up the River East layout alignment, working with staff. And so, and so that site grading plan and the bathroom both have been finalized, and I sent it off to Derek and Sean, just for another once-through. And then, if they have any other feedback, and then after that, then I'll share that with the rest of the township staff so that they can see what the final version's going to look like, and then share that with AJ's to look at for pricing, at least at a minimum for the parking lot, the sidewalk, and then depending on how the bathroom looks and their availability, that may be something that we solicit out for bid separately and work out, because it can be kind of its own entity. But, no, I finally got those two guys, a lot of, yeah, Derek and Sean. Got to kind of corral them a little bit, so, because on the same token, then the pickleball court that you guys approved at a previous meeting, we're also working on that site layout. And the goal, trying to get that out for bid this fall too, and interest from contractors. So, theoretically, yeah, we'll have some focus at our two parks and hopefully get some progress done, provide some parking and additional sidewalk. The Commons Trail continues to present more challenges. Eagle keeps coming back with more data. We haven't had to go to like a formal public notice where, you know, it's within their purview if Eagle wants to do that, but they just keep coming back and asking more questions because some of you may or may not be aware of, but that area there, the trail portions of it used to be an old dump site. So, with the trail, even though it's an active trail, with the work proposing, they're using that as an opportunity to keep asking for more questions, more mitigation measures, and wanting just to see more details with restoration and things of that nature. And then, Derek also had sent to me, not that long ago, over by Greenspire, an Atchison well in spring kind of popped itself up and presented itself. It also has now added, so we've got some more surface water to navigate. So, that's ongoing, and we're not, hopefully, we can get through Eagle. We have a new guy as part of it too, and so he's being very careful and cautious. And so, we've gone round and round, made a few changes with him, probably about six times now on the permitting side. See what else. Other things, we've got, been getting a lot of stormwater reviews come in lately, about four of them. Utility reviews, the Brixton, and then the new, recent one that we received and set up in Escrow for, or in process, is Project Alpha that our county commissioner spoke about. They reached out, and so we'll be doing review on your behalf for utilities. And some of you are also aware, any hydrant projects now, like such as Kingsley Lumber, where it's just a hydrant, that now requires Eagle permitting. So, we have to, which is actually good, considering the timing with, of us rescinding our private hydrant ordinance. It just helps solidify us to keep track of those hydrants. So, I have been, I'm a proponent of that, just to help us continue to work with contractors on ensuring they're installed adequately. Couple items, DPW related to working with our new director, onboarding, working with him on closeout. I actually have a training class that we're doing in a couple weeks with staff on plans and reading plans, commercial reviews, closeout process that the new director has asked us to host. We've been doing quite a few of the complex commercial reviews on his behalf, and that's where part of the training is, so at some point, that hopefully, his staff can have a better comfort level of doing some of the simpler reviews themselves, because the previous director, I think, did a lot of those internally. Working with the director also, and UFS as far as water and sewer rates, and making sure that all the costs associated of the capital improvements the city's doing are, have been factored in, and so I expect something's going to probably be coming back to you guys soon on that. Cass and South Airport, I think, I'm trying to remember if I gave an update to the board. We cut into the pipe, and they were both empty. Yeah.
Oh.
Crickets, I know. So, that was extremely disheartening. Because that was, yeah, a lot of time invested, and so I don't know if it was a matter of someone drilled it, and then drilled another one right next to it, and realized they hit our sewer, and then decided to go another route? It's hard to say. So, that's why I've been asking about the metro permits, and, you know, maybe this is something that happened 10, 12 years ago, and it just hit the pipe just at the right point where it kept that piece of clay there, where it was such a trickle, and then eventually, it just, over time, dislodged itself where the sinkhole presented. I'm guessing, because we have no other prospects, because this is, we haven't gotten any of the bills in yet, but I'm anticipating it's going to be quite a hefty bill. So, I've been working with Noah on his routes for insurance claims, also putting him in touch with MCPS through Metro Act to complain, complaints through their department. I believe your manager, he's been looking through power plan if there's avenues, because I, it's not appropriate, I feel that this, the township, you know, is a cost that is a burden on them, because it's a situation we didn't create. So, but ultimately, that's what it was, there was nothing in them. So, yeah. And then, the sewer investigation with TCAPs and through Heritage Estates. The DPW did approve our contract, so we're acting as an independent party to go in and investigate about 8,000 feet of Water Main, and I think there's probably about 100 manholes. And so, GFL was contracted through us as that independent agent to do that inspection, so that at least we can check the existing integrity of the pipes, potentially see if there was something that may have created, and the situation with the sewer backups. And then, we'll, from there, audit, review the videos. If there's cleaning that needs to be done, we'll recommend that, and we'll be providing a formal memo recommendation to the DPW board, and I'll make sure you guys have a copy of that too. And that's supposed to take place with GFL the week of the 5th. So, we'll be working with them on sewer televising. Sorry, I'm done now.
Go ahead, Molly.
Yeah, one is on the Commons Trail, our, the costs, I'm assuming the costs are going to change because we have water problems and we have other things going on. So, you're keeping up to date on?
Yes, yes, we've been updating the cost estimates and sharing that with staff, but we also have alternatives set up too. I mean, ultimately, in working with the DNR, that if we change parameters, for example, when the grant application was submitted, it was on the precipice of a 10-foot wide trail everywhere. Well, we've narrowed that in some locations, like the boardwalk areas to save costs, and working with DNR and getting confirmation, if, say, we narrow it to say 8-foot, you know, does that cause any funding concerns? And so, and it has not, because that's the goal, we don't want to risk any of our funding with the DNR either, and so we're working through different alternatives and modifications to.
So, how would we do, so we have a DNR grant?
Correct.
And so, if we run over that?
Yes, the township saddled with that cost, yeah, yeah, because it's.
Do we have any kind of an idea where we're headed there?
I've provided updated cost estimates to Mr. Psych, and he has those. And Steve Hannan as well, yeah.
All right. And then, the other question is on the pipes at Airport Road and Cass.
Yeah.
So, is, there is no sewage flowing through that pipe? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I'm sorry, so, we have sewer there. It was a 12-inch clay sewer, and what happened is two conduits were encountered. We had a sinkhole, we dug it up, and we found that two conduits that we believed to be fiber optic had hit the bottom of that clay pipe, that sewer. And so, that's what had caused that sewer to break and caused the sinkhole. That was fixed.
It was an operational sewer line?
It was not an operation, no.
It is operational.
Yes, it was an active sewer line.
And it still remains an operational sewer line?
Yeah, yeah. So, what we had to do, and that's why we were trying to find out who the utility was, is because we needed to move those lines, because our sewer's rigid, and we didn't have any ability to adjust it, and we needed those two lines that hit ours out of the way. And that's why it took so long, because we didn't want to cut something that could have been active and come to find.
So, there was a spill out of that line that caused the sinkhole?
Correct.
Okay, and so, is there environmental concerns there?
It all got reported to Eagle, and it was documented, but they didn't have any concerns that they had noted, no.
It was 19 feet in depth.
Yeah.
Who runs this optic line down there?
Well, and the thing is, is it's hard to say how long it's been like that for, but it's definitely not anything within close proximity, surface water, groundwater, that was of concern. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good questions, thank you, Molly.
Anything else for Jennifer?
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Jennifer. Township managers report.
Our wage study that we embarked on a few months ago is concluding. We should have a formal report from the company next week. I hope to have that available during budget conversations. So that's a good thing. I had mentioned at our last meeting that we were hosting a bunch of community events here with the DOJ and the prosecutor's office for the victims of Walmart. Well-attended. They had all-day stuff going on. And then yesterday evening was a victim forum. There was, I believe, 11 total victims and five, the victims were injured. And then five of those actually showed up last night for the event that went on. So that was well-attended. And one, one of the victims actually drove four hours from down south to come and attend. And as part of their therapy, went to Walmart. So, you know, I just kind of felt the sense of pride that this, you know, we allowed that to happen. It's a safe place for them to come and they chose to take that resource. So I thought it was kind of neat. And the DOJ and the prosecutor's office thanked the township for allowing them to use our, our office. So. Our deputy assessor, who the board approved to hire, is actually officially going to start on the 15th of September. Let you know that. The Heritage Water Tower is getting some upgrades to the cell equipment. So AT&amp;T, it's their equipment. We're working with a contractor and a consultant in arranging that and signing the agreement or notice to proceed, which we did with the monopole over by the mall several months ago. I think, I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Chris?
Yeah. Can you get us the wage study before the budget meeting?
Yep.
So don't just hand it out there. So we got a chance to look it over.
As soon as I get it, I'll send it your way.
Thank you.
I did have one more quick comment regarding the Heritage Estates sewer backup. The homeowners were connected with the insurance company of the contractor. And so they're working with an adjuster right now. So there may be some financial reprieve for those people, which is good, because that was all kind of unknown for months, for a month and a half. So that, that's a good thing. I don't know what's going to come with that, but at least there's an avenue for the homeowners to maybe get covered.
Anything else for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Supervisor report, just a couple of quick things. We did have a meeting, Chris and I met with Representative, the Long Lake Supervisor and their legal staff about, you know, the ongoing water issues with Long Lake. So we're going to continue that discussion when we, when we sit down with the city in a few weeks. I think September 3rd is our, actually next, next week, I guess, and start continuing the discussions on water. We'll continue that. From a BPW standpoint, we did, as we mentioned before, the county did approve reducing the board from 11 to nine. And we officially changed the bylaws to reflect that. So now we actually have, easier for us to get a quorum, which we need. And then we did recommend to the county board to, they did clarify the confusion around the rural rep. And the BPW board recommended reappointing Rob LaCoe as the rural rep. So we'll see how that goes at the next county meeting. So. And then as Chris mentioned, the Heritage Estates, you know, not, haven't really talked a lot about that, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of damage to the nine or 10 houses that were involved in that. Some upwards of over $100,000 or more in damage in some of these houses. So we're really hoping that gets handled quickly and that the, the parties that may be responsible step forward and help with that. So hopefully that comes through. Metro Fire had a good meeting today. Just, just of note, they, they had a, a small recognition today of the, I think they had eight representatives of Metro Fire that were also involved with the Walmart situation. And, and, you know, all, across all first responders, everybody performed very admirably and appears on every level. So they just recognized those eight individuals today and thanked them for their, you know, doing their job and doing it well. So, and that's all I have. Any questions for me? All right. Well, moving on, I don't see anything under unfinished business, so new business. Item A, consideration of request to reduce the speed limit on Lefraine Road, Resolution 2025 dash 23 dash T. Chris?
I believe I mentioned this in a past report, that we met with Beta staff, Ridge 45 staff, our planner, and discussed the PUD approval of the Beta transfer station years ago, that Beta and Ridge 45 would put in a crosswalk. The thought process for the approval was, you know, we'll put the Beta station there and that the people who live in Ridge 45 or nearby can cross the road, jump on the bus, and then travel wherever they needed to. So it, part of the approval was important to have that. Working with Beta, you know, they're concerned with the amount of traffic that's goes through there and is there a potential for somebody to get hurt if we're identifying a crosswalk? So, you know, one solution to the concern was, can the speed limit be lowered? And right now it's unposted 55, that whole section. And, you know, if you've lived in the area for a long time, you know that just in the last 10 years, that places, that road has doubled with activity, buildings, you name it. So, you know, I forwarded the board an article today or some information about lowering speeds. And, you know, really what you gain from that is reaction time in driving. And if you have, you know, if you're going slower, you have more time to make the decision and take an invasive action to maybe avoid hitting somebody, injuring somebody, or crashing. So by lowering it, you gain that. I did provide data as well that I got from Lieutenant Raska that talked about, or showed the traffic citations issued over a five-year period in that area and also crashes near where that Beta stop would be. And so that was just for information. It's kind of hard for me to say that that data is supporting the argument. You know, it's just data. And, you know, it's hard to compare it to something else, a different road, because they all have their own unique characteristics. You know, the speed, the, what's on the road, amount of cars that go through it a given day. So it, it's kind of hard for me to say, here's data that supports you to approve this. I just wanted you to be aware of that information. So I, I also provided, or Karen did, the statute that governs the process, that this board can approve a resolution and request a speed study through the road commission, who then passes that request on to the state police. The road commission can also do a private study, but there's a cost of like roughly $500. So this board, if they chose to go that route, they could pay 500 and have a firm do that instead of the state police, which actually, according to the road commission manager, it takes a little bit longer than the state police. So, and I also invited Chris Davis, interim director of Beta, to kind of share a few words on why they feel it's important for this to, to go through and then that the study be done. So I don't know if you'd like to have her-
Sure.
Say a few things?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of the board. And I also thank you, Chris, for the reminder.
Absolutely.
A lot of things juggling right now. So appreciate the reminder also that, with the meeting this evening. But, yeah, I'm the interim executive director. I'm also the personnel director, HR director at Beta. Been there about eight years now and just the interim just since December. So I also brought with me Bill Clark. He is our transportation planner and mobility and outreach coordinator with a nice background in this area. So just wanted to take a minute. We've been in our new facility on Lefraine and Hammond now just over a year. If you haven't already had a tour, I would welcome an opportunity to give you a personal tour, one-on-one. If you were in there when we first did our tours and would like to just see an update, again, I'd welcome an opportunity anytime to give any of you individual tours of our facility. We're very proud of it. It's really worked very well for us. We have increased from 104 to 146 employees. You know how this winter was and all of our buses, up to 85, are now being able to be inside. So our employees don't need to come in for a half hour before the start of the shift and warm up their vehicles and blow the snow off. And this winter, I'm proud to say, even with our bad winter, we did not miss one hour of transportation. We did not close down one day. We did not close down a half a day. So I give a lot of credit to our new facility and the perseverance of our staff too. So, but yes, as part of our PUD, we agreed to put a crosswalk in on Lefraine. And the study was done a couple of years ago. And as we all know, since then, Lefraine has had a significant increase in the development, in the residents along that corridor, and the traffic. The current speed limit is 55 on there. So we've been getting information from the Federal Highway Administration and talking about the higher vehicle speeds dramatically increase the likelihood and severity of crashes involving pedestrians. And any of the uncontrolled marked crossways, crosswalks on high-speed roads may actually lead to higher crash and fatality rate compared to no-marked crosswalks. So the safety of our pedestrians and the safety of marked community residents really is our priority there. So we would just humbly request that a speed study be conducted. To be honest, our preference would be just whoever can do it and whoever can do it, but we're fine with state police. If you need a $500 fee paid, we can do that, whatever. We'd take the advice of Garfield Township. But we would really like to see another speed study done and then we can keep moving forward with the process. Does anyone have any questions of Bill or I that I could answer?
No, just, just a comment. I think you're, you're on the mark when you talk about the development on Lefraine Road. I, it's hard to believe that road's 55, having, driving it a fair amount of, pretty frequently, the amount between the apartments and the trailer park and now Beta and the flats, housing that's going in there and Project Alpha, the whole county out there. It's just, it's pretty hard to believe it's still 55. So hopefully the study and whatever, ultimately makes the decision gives a serious consideration. Because I would personally fully support reducing that through there, you know. But we'll see what happens.
Joe, we appreciate it. You know, our buses are traveling there all day long from 5:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. And I personally, and my vehicle was going 50, but I had someone pass me, like I was standing still on that road. And I'm like, I can't imagine if we have an uncontrolled crosswalk right there now, what, what possibly could happen. So I would just love to, we would love as an organization to just have another speed study done, to begin a process to provide safe walking in that area. And it's only going to grow. The next couple of years, Joe, you're right, it's just going to have more and more traffic, more and more developments along that way. So we just want it safe for everybody. And again, just offer an opportunity if anyone would like a tour of our beautiful facility.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. We have a, a resolution for our consideration.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025 dash 23 dash T, the request to reduce the speed limit on Lefraine Road.
Support.
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt Resolution 2025 dash 23 dash T. Any further discussion on that motion? Anne, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Is it McCumber? No, Lab?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Al McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on, consideration of adopting the capital improvement program, CIP. Chris, I believe you're going to handle that tonight?
Yeah. Our planning director, John Psych, has been in front of you numerous times talking about our CIP plan, which is in the packet. And this is a draft that we're looking for you to approve tonight. If you look on the first page of the packet agenda item, there's a, a motion, recommended motion at the bottom. And I think it's important to note that this is a, kind of a working document. You know, it isn't set in stone. It can be adjusted through time. The priorities of things can be changed. So you, it's good to start with a, a plan. And then if you need to adjust it going down the road, you can. But it's, you know, we felt that putting it in a, on a document allows you to bring that into your budget planning sessions and, you know, help the budget process. And also allows us to prioritize things from the board and also the community can see that as well. So.
Just a couple of things to add to what Chris said. I think, you know, I think that we, I don't think we've ever had a capital improvement plan approved at the board level. So it, you know, the one thing that it does provide us is some, some increased ability and, and hope and hope for, for grants and funding. A lot of times if you go after some grant money for projects, the first thing they like to look at is your CIP plan to see if it fits into your plan or it's listed in your plan. So having one may aid us in getting future funding and things like that. And, and Chris hit on this, this is a, it's like a, I almost describe it like a master plan for spending. Like a master plan in zoning. It's, it's changing and it's evolving. It's a growing document. It's not a budget. I know some other people have looked at it and some of the boards and, oh, they think it's a budget. It's not a budget. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a plan. So it's just a great document. Have it placed and something to work with. So, anyway, thanks. Just add to what you said.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the draft capital improvement plan as attached to the planning department report 2025 dash 90 in accordance to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt the draft CIP plan. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, on to our next public comment. We will go ahead and open public comment. This is your second opportunity to come forward and let us know if you have anything you'd like to say to the board. And as often the case, nobody's coming forward. We'll go ahead and close that and bring it back. Any other business to come before the board this evening? Chris?
Can we talk about a date to meet to do a budget study session? Something on the calendar?
Do we know for sure? I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I would just say we do, do we know when we're going to have? I think the, the real budget is, we're looking at the numbers. We need that, we'd like to have that wage study before we start putting the numbers in.
If the board's okay with me just reaching out and checking availability when that shows up, that way we don't have to cancel it. I'm good with that too, if you're good.
As soon as we have those numbers and we can, you know, just, we had it scheduled tonight before this meeting, just schedule it for the next board meeting as soon as we can that we have the numbers, I would think, unless somebody has any problem with that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn?